Board meeting session is now three o'clock. Good afternoon, and so we're going to do introductions, starting down at the end here.
Dave Larson, District Five.
Nancy Pedrosa, Superintendent.
Charlie Simpson, District Two, and we should have.
Hello, Carly Hoover, I'm District One.
I believe Proctor will be joining us here shortly, in the next 20 minutes or so, is running late. Welcome to our guests who are joining us both in person and online. I need a motion for the approval of the April ninth board session agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we're now moving to our public comments section. If you are attending in person and would like to make a public comment, you can sign up on the public comment site in sheet. For those who are attending online, raise your hand or type your name in that section. So I do have someone here today. Kate Krueller. Perfect, nice. Come on up, please, and then we'll, that'll give our people online if they want to raise their hand.
Assuming you were taking comment from the podium. Two items, one, uh, the Sunday before the last meeting that you had, there was, I was out walking my dog, and I spotted somebody, I heard a lot of chain activity near the fence on Cascade Elementary School's fence that was along the bike rock and roll to school path. That's between the food bank and Cascade Elementary, and sure enough, there was somebody going into the yard. So I didn't have a phone with me, I went to the nearest neighbor and they made a call. But I don't know other than that there's a new chain there and the old chain there with a new lock there. I don't know what the process is for the school, you know, reporting out. I guess if you're gonna have a six foot fence, it's the only elementary school with a six foot fence. Yeah, in other situations, I would like to say there's probably a neighborhood wishes to be where there's jungle gyms and soccer fields and things available. And I hope one day to be part of this team and actually start working with the city on maybe we can work something out with Parks and Rec about that. But meantime, um, I'm not, maybe I just haven't been to enough meetings, hearing reports on what's happening security wise and when we have breaches, and it seems like the board should be aware or just get a paper report or something, just so that situational awareness is there. And then my second comment is I've been coming to a lot of meetings and going through a process, and I'm very definitely, um, you know, patient about the process. I know you're going through a lot, but I think the public deserves to know what the process next steps are and what dates they're going to happen. Because there's a district that's going unrepresented at every one of these meetings. So I just thought I would put that comment in for consideration of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no other in-person comments, is there any online? Give just a moment here. Hey, if not, then we will be moving on to the board meeting. Number four discussion items, we're going to start with the budget.
Good afternoon, Amy Fleming, Chief Financial Officer. About the budget. So I wanted to go over a few things with you today, mainly to address a little bit of the budget development timeline, to go over again our fund balance projection, what we believe enrollment predictors will look like. And then budget reduction recommendations that we're bringing forth today as a starter to get to a balanced budget. So I included today just the strategic plan because this is a public document. I thought it would be a good idea to include that information in here is that is kind of our guiding light and what drives our work. I wasn't going to spend a lot of time on that, so if we could jump through to the next two slides. Again, because of the situation that we've been in, that is not a big surprise. One of our main focuses for budget development this year is to work on bringing us to a balanced budget and getting us to zero. Obviously, we are in binding conditions, and so that is one of the biggest goals. As I've discussed in previous board meetings, as well as the former Chief Financial Officer Greg Woodard, Essar funding is ending essentially at the end of this fiscal year. And as we've been discussing in previous board meetings, our estimated fund balance will be anywhere between the negative 3.5 to 4.4 million range.
There's a question, so does that, how much interfund loan do we have outstanding at this point?
We currently have $4 million in interfund loans. That is the cash borrowing from the Capital Projects Fund to, you know, keep us afloat, to make payroll, to pay our bills, things of that nature.
So how does that figure, when you say a fund balance? Is this, is that paying off that $4 million, is that in addition to this?
It'll be in addition to, so that's our long range two-year plan is to get us to that financial stability, building our reserves, you know, that 4% that's required through binding conditions. And then that will give us that ability to then repay the Capital Projects Fund for the loan that we've taken from that fund.
So the, a little bit, the more, the more accurate situation is at the end of 23, 24, we want a fund balance 3.5 to 4.4 plus, we owe $4 million on top of that.
Correct.
So it's actually more like a, you know, 7.5 to 8.4.
Yeah, the cash balance doesn't come into play into your fund balance conversation, but yes, essentially, in order to get us whole, we will need to work on that plan for those additional reductions in order to get us back to stability. And that's part of the conversations as to why OSPI was requiring that 4% ending fund balance by the end of 25, 26.
So you're, yeah, this, so you're using two terms, so you're doing fund balance and cash balance.
Yeah.
And so cash balance is where we have to get, I mean, a lot of the conditions of bindings are talk about fund balance, it doesn't talk about cash balance.
Correct.
But we have to keep that in mind.
Yes, we do.
That's, we have to, yeah, get there as well in order to be fully sound. Okay.
The next two slides show us our budget development timeline. And so we have a requirement by state law to have a budget approved by the board and submitted to OSPI Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction by August 31st. And so if you work backwards from that timeline, it gives you just the amount of work that we need to do. So I just wanted to start with, as information came forth about where we stood financially, Dr. Pedrosa was out in the community, obviously having conversations with the board through several board meetings and has met with various groups, PTA, staff meetings, had met with Stillwater. And so a lot of engagement, just to be very transparent about where we are and what we need to do in order to have a balanced budget. I also know that in previous budgets, there was community outreach, but community didn't really come to the table. So there wasn't a lot of engagement. So Dr. Pedrosa decided to go out to community to have these conversations and move this forward. We are planning on having two Zoom sessions, one scheduled in May, we have not quite scheduled that yet, and one in June, so that the public can provide input to our budget and our budget process. The next slide is our projected fund balance. This has not yet been updated for, and will be updated for the April 23rd board meeting, but I wanted to provide it as context. As I presented in the previous month's board meeting, I provided the worst case scenario of a $4.4 million ending negative fund balance. And so I'm just bringing this forth again, so you are aware, and just have that in front of you. The next slide, again, I've shown this slide previously. This is what a rollover budget would look like. So if we made an assumption of a 2% increase in revenue and a 3.7 increase in, or 3% increase in expenditures, our ending fund balance next year without making any reductions with the loss of Essar funding would be negative 13.2 million. And this does not take into consideration the 4 million cash loan that we've got from the Capital Projects Fund. The next slide shows enrollment, what we have looked like historically. This year has been a bump, obviously a big bump in our enrollment actuals through March of 2024, basically because of the asylum seekers, Riverton Church. And so we've seen a really large increase, which is unusual. Usually it's, it's flat. A lot of times districts will see a decline in their enrollment as the school year progresses. And so we're in a unique situation, which makes predicting enrollment for next fiscal year a little bit difficult. We do know that Riverton is no longer accepting new families. So we believe that some of the enrollment growth we've been seeing will steady. And we are also seeing a number of families, obviously, in the, moving into motels in the Kent, Auburn, and Highline areas. And so we are working with those districts to determine how many of those families might be enrolling in those districts where we might see some enrollment loss. So right now, what we're doing is we're predicting an enrollment of 2,557 FTE, so full-time equivalent students, as the start of the next fiscal year. And part of that is enrollment is one of our basic funding allocation methods from the state. And so if we project too high and then fund teachers and other staff members off of that, and it's too high, we're going to be in the same situation we were in this current year. So we need to be really careful and a little bit conservative, and then monitor throughout the summer to determine what the enrollment is truly looking like, and, and then staff accordingly through the summer, as we know those numbers and they become more accurate. The next slide is just a enrollment by grade picture. And so it shows you the elementary, middle, and high school levels historically, and then the prediction for next year, what we're using as our basis for our enrollment numbers. The last slide provides some information about some of our proposals for our budget reductions as we look to the 24, 25 school year. Obviously, with Essar funding going away, which is a large chunk, and another large grant that's also ending is 21st Century. We don't believe that one is resuming into the next fiscal year. That grant is $500,000. And so you will see that the proposals here are all across the board. It includes central office, it includes certificated, classified, at all levels of the district. A lot of contract reductions as well. Many of our contracts were funded off of Essar. And while we would like to continue with a lot of those contractors, we just don't have the funding to do so moving forward in the future.
Just to clarify, the, the numbers that are listed here on this page we're looking at, that, that's the amount of reductions that are happening.
Correct, yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to use this diagram to talk a little bit about, how did we get to where we are today? Because there were some comments at the last meeting that, you know, lack of financial accountability on the part of the board and so forth. But the first thing to notice about this is that, you know, about half of the $9 million that's listed there is due to the loss of the Essar dollars. So these are the dollars that came from the federal government to help us get through the COVID situation. And we knew all along that those dollars were going to be going away at the end of this year. And so the, we were faced with the situation of, I mean, they were used initially a lot for the, dealing with the health situation in terms of PPE protective. Then we hired a bunch of staff, quarantine specialists, and transportation and food and all that kind of stuff to kind of keep the schools alive during that period. And then later, we started using it for, you know, a lot of staffing positions related to, you know, social, you know, social workers and parage caters and a lot of the things that we were needed to support students. And so, you know, it's, initially, some people were saying, well, you shouldn't use that money for things that you would know, that you know are needed on an ongoing basis. Now, you know, we know because of the demographic populations that we serve, we have, you know, the, the state was, has been underfunding that for years, and we need a lot of extra supports for students from, from low-income families. And so, you know, we took advantage of the Essar dollars and spent that for that. Now, you know, you could say, well, that was irresponsible. So the choice was, we could have not spent that money and just left it on the table, and then our students would have not had two years or two, three years of extra support. And so I, you know, just maintain that's not irresponsible at all. What's, the problem is that, you know, the federal government, and I'll talk a little bit about the state side, but did not fund that beyond the period that it's really needed. So now, of course, you know, this results in a lot of positions having to be let go at the end of the, of the Essar period. But, you know, to, to call that irresponsible management, I don't think is, is correct. So, so that's the first thing about the, you know, about half of that $9 million is just that. You know, I think we were far better giving our students a couple of extra years of support for that, rather than not do that, which is the alternative. Now, on the state side, you know, the state, we know, and that's the, what's under this column, basic education, called BEA money, basic education allocation, that's the money that comes from the state. And we know that the state's whole system of allocating for public schools is regressive. And by that, I mean, the, the districts that have the lower poverty rates get higher per student allocations than districts like ours that have the higher poverty, which is, you know, totally backwards and problematic, and particularly it's problematic for our students and a lot of the students. And this is an issue I've been working on for several years with the state, and we're starting to get a little traction down there with some, some ideas. But, you know, when, when you look at the, the BEA side of it, there's a couple of aspects to how the state funds and has been changing over the last few years. One of them, which I just talked about, was kind of the equity side. The other side is the ample side. So is the state funding, you know, all districts sufficiently to cover the costs of basic education? And the answer is clearly no. And so for a variety of examples that districts have been pointing out to legislature this year was, for example, insurance. Insurance costs, you know, they gave us like a 3%, 2% raise in, in MSOC, which is, insurance is covered in. And it's, insurance has been going for us in most districts up at about 30% a year for several years. So they're way, way behind the curve in terms of funding that. And it's because of, you know, inflationary costs and a variety of things. I mean, most people notice, I think, recently in their car insurance, that car insurance isn't going like that due to various inflationary costs. And the state is, is not anywhere near covering those costs for us. So that's, for us, that's about three quarters of a million dollars, boom, right there. So we're talking about working on this other 4 million of the BEA. And then the other one, you know, a big one for us is what's called paid family medical leave, which the legislature passed, you know, six or seven years ago. And it's great, you get extended time for employees to take, you know, for family and medical purposes, but they don't cover, they don't cover our costs of substitutes. If all those people go out, you got to provide substitutes. So they, again, you know, and I think our district, so the state covers about four substitutes per teacher. You know, in our case, last year, I think it was about 24. Other districts, it was, you know, 10 to 15, I think we had a little more than average. But anyway, this, the state, so there's, there's another three quarters of a million dollars, boom, out the door, you know, that the state isn't covering. This year, you know, like I say, we, I've been working on this issue for a while, the, and so that's the ample part of it. Every district has those kinds of problems. But on top of those, we have the additional thing of not adequately supporting our, you know, low-income students. So the only funding stream from the state that covers, you know, that is based on income is what's called the Learning Assistance Program. And, you know, I did a lot of lobbying, and there was actually a bill introduced this year to double the amount of lap high poverty, high poverty dollars, which for us would have been like one and a quarter million dollars. So there's another one, a quarter million. It didn't pass, of course, and so we're down that. It's, it's, it got a lot of, it got some support, but next, so I'm, I'm, I'm kind of hopeful for next year. But anyway, so, you know, there's, I mean, in those last three areas, there's like 3, 3 million, you know, like that, which we aren't going to get, so we have to find, so where are we going to get it from? And, you know, the rest of, so we're going to have to examine, you know, the one thing that always is pointed out when we go into these cost-cutting things as well, just, you know, cut administration. And just for a little history, I mean, a number of years ago, we did have a high percentage, we had like 12% or something, it was administration costs, central administration costs, and that was too high. And so we cut that way back. The board said, no, you need to get it down to more like the average, which is like seven. We're kind of in that ballpark right now and have been for a number of years. So, you know, I think we've, we've cut a lot of, of, of that situation out. The other thing to keep in mind about constantly cutting administration is, so what does administration do? Well, you know, I mean, people will say, you know, to keep it farthest away from the classroom, yeah, administration is farther away from the classroom. However, what does administration do? They do things like, you know, pay people, payroll, which nobody would be very happy if all of a sudden the paychecks started going out slower. The other thing they do, a big thing, which is an increasing problem, is the state requires us to, require school districts to give all kinds of reports and, you know, what's going on and on and on and on. And if you don't do those things, there will be consequences. I mean, there will be less, you know, you'll start whacking away at our revenue and that kind of thing. So revenue, you know, I mean indirectly hits students in classrooms. And so the other thing is what administrators do. Well, you know, a lot of administrators we've had over the years are looking out for grants, you know. So, so they're looking for revenue streams that we wouldn't have if, if they weren't there. So you have to be really careful, you know, when you say just cut administration, cut administration, you know, that you can only do that so far. And I, and I know Dr. Pedrosa is, I mean, she is looking, you always need to look at that, and there's, she's going to have some proposals for restructuring some administration to make it a little more efficient, but it's not going to get you, you know, $9 million or even $4 million. But, you know, so we have to be, it, it can get some, but not a huge amount. And so, and then the other big area that I know we're going to work on, and everybody has to kind of understand that, you know, our bargaining agreements. So our bargaining agreements are up for renewal this year. And there's a lot of things in those bargaining agreements that, you know, can either enhance our ability or reduce our ability to get more revenue, like, you know, Medicaid reimbursement is an area that, you know, we could, we have some opportunity to get some more revenue if we could adjust some of the working conditions. And then, you know, there's, there's stipends, and there's a variety of things in there that I think we're going to have to, and I know we're, we're looking at all that. So, I mean, this is, you know, this is a huge problem. I mean, it's 9 million, and then, you know, when you put another 4 million of repaying on top of that, this is going to be one of those all, you know, we, we need to be looking everywhere, and there's no place that's going to be able to be not reduced. And because of the fact that the state, you know, fundamentally unfairly inequitably funds things, unfortunately, we know that there's going to be cuts that are going to hurt our students. I mean, that's, it's, it's unavoidable because of the math. So I think people need to understand that going in and, and that, you know, you can, I mean, people can come in and, and, you know, blame the board for this and that, but the other thing to understand is the board, we do not determine how much money we get. We have no, no determination of that. That is determined almost exclusively in Olympia. So if people want to vent, and it's perfectly their right to come in and vent and so forth, and I'm sure they will, but, you know, the venting really belongs down in Olympia because that's who has set up this system that's kind of put us in this situation. So I just want to, yeah, just kind of provide some, some background so people kind of understand where this is, where this came from, and, you know, where we're going to, I mean, everybody's obviously going to need to work together to help us get out of this, and because it's, it's by far the most serious financial. But, you know, and I don't think that, you know, the financial oversight of the board has been, are there some areas we can approve? Sure, we can always approve, but I don't think that's primarily the, the, the big area is, the prime, the big, the main area is the state funding system. So anyway, I just wanted to use this picture to kind of provide some context to these, to these numbers and, and why we, how we got where we got.
Any other comments? I think the one thing that I would like to say, though, is I do appreciate that you do take what we have control of, right? That we can look and see what we are, and that you're, you're budgeting it out, you know, appropriately to, to that. And, and the one thing, though, I would, if we could, in the future, see that 4 million loan on there so that we can also just be aware of, these are kind of the check and balances that we need to have there so that it's over there. That would be great, that would be my, my, thank you. If there's no other comments, we'll be moving on to the board priorities.
So, Mr. Jay, if you want to start, we had, I think we left, let's see, we left the discussion on this one. We were trying to come up with a, well, let's see, so we're, we're trying to, we have a letter from, actually, it's to Dr. Pedrosa from the DSD Superintendent and the Chief Financial Officer from OSPI, saying, basically recognizing that we're, we're in the binding conditions, and therefore, here are some things that we need to do. And the, particularly for the board, it was, the school board show, will create a plan to address fiscal stabilization requirements to PSESC and OSPI for review by April 15th, 2024. The plan will include ranked board budget priorities and budget philosophy documents. So the question that I was raising last time was, you know, what does this ranked board priorities mean? And so I took the assignment to go over, and I had a meeting with John Welch, who's the Superintendent of our Puchan DSD and who wrote this letter. And, and I said, you know, trying to get a better understanding of exactly what they're going to want from us on this particular item, number seven, which is by the fifth, April 15th. And when we talked about, so we, we started a discussion of, let's see, what do we, how far did we get with the board priorities?
Director Larson, if I could just jump in, we, we were all kind of tasked with bringing back six. Director Larson, if I could just jump in, we were all kind of tasked with bringing back six, like at minimum, six board budget priorities that were in alignment with the strategic plan so that then we could use all of our individual ideas to then complete our collective board priorities document.
Right, so I asked the Superintendent John Welch if by rank, does this mean, does this require a one, two, three ranking? And he said, no. So we don't, we don't need to have a one, two, three ranking. We could have a more collection of, of things. His, the one big addition that he talked about, which I think is, that's not here in this letter, but would, is really helpful to add, would be some indication from Dr. Petrosa or, and/or our CFO about where we are in terms of the planning. So the doc, the, the presentation that we just got from our CFO, I think, covers that. I mean, it's pretty, there, so what John Welch is looking, what they're looking for is, you know, do we have, at this point, and recognizing that this is relatively early in planning, but do we have, you know, are we on a good, solid direction to get the numbers in, in line? And I think the, the presentation that we got from our CFO just, I mean, I think that covers it. I mean, so that's, that's really what he's looking for, I think, more than, more than necessarily a, a high-level board priorities kind of thing. And I think that would, that's what's going to keep him happy. So I think if, you know, we started, I think, last time, we, we had some high-level ones. Let's see, emotion, on the board priorities, emotional and mental well-being of our student population, maintain and increase supports for multilingual and their families, continue and increase anti-racist practice district-wide. So, I mean, I've got a couple other I'd like to add to that. But if we kept, you know, I think the goal was six, but somewhere around there, high-level things, call that our board priorities, and then we have a board philosophy document. And if anybody wants to tweak that, we can tweak that. And then combine that with, you know, some version of presentation that the CFO gave. I think that's, I think that's what, I think that'll be fine for what John Welch is looking for.
I would think I would agree also. I think as far as it doesn't need to be in, you know, determined, we're just going to do high level and then we're going to get the, unless somebody, President, do you have anything for the, you know, bunch of philosophy or anything that you want to add on that, on the document that's not there that we could, so we can move forward with this?
Yeah, first I want to thank Director Larson for connecting with Superintendent Welch and getting that clarification. I do wish that it was more clear in the wording and it didn't say ranked, because ranked means a certain thing. But thank you for, for getting that clarity. I think as far as the board budget priorities, excuse me, the board budget philosophy, we collectively at a work session about a month or so ago, decided that that still felt in alignment with where we were. I think if anything, I know that there were some, some comments related to a few of the specific philosophy points that I think, you know, require some attention perhaps from the superintendent, thinking about, you know, what metrics or measures we're using to think about programs and the effectiveness rather of those programs and so on. And we talked a little bit about that, Dr. Petrosa, at different times. So all that to say, I feel that the philosophy document is still true, is a little bit longer than I think is ideal, yes. But I think the, with the board priorities being a little bit more short and clear, I think is, is important. I also crafted a few different ones. I'm not sure if they're, maybe just a reframing of at least one of the ones that we had written on the board priorities or not, but I did want to at least acknowledge that I did that homework piece and wanted to share those with you all. But, yeah, I don't know if that's what you asked, Director Peterson, I'm sorry. And I want to apologize to everyone, I'm feeling really out of the weather, so my brain's a little bit foggy today.
I think that is what we asked, is just if you had something more you wanted to change or present, you know, bring to it and add to it, you know, that, that we could either do that now, you know, or you could, or let's do it now. Yeah, if you've got something, that would be great, so that we could add it to the document if we, so that we could wrap this up and get this sent out.
Yeah, absolutely. So I'm going to type them in, I typed them in the chat as well, just so that they're in writing. But I was just kind of thinking about, again, really connected to our strategic plan. So these four, and, you know, we don't have to use all of them, but these were some that really stuck out to me as being really important. So one is making meaningful professional development available to staff to increase their understanding and accountability of SEO.
Excuse me, Director Hoover, sorry, some folks up here can't hear her very clearly. I just wonder if we could up the volume a little bit or, okay.
I don't even know if it's volume, I just think.
Oh, maybe. Yeah, let me turn that off then.
If it'd be helpful, I'm happy for Deb or someone else to read them for me. I just posted them in the chat, if it'd be easier for you all to hear that than me talking.
Connecting this to schools to identity and interest-based enrichment programs specifically for socially and systemically marginalized students. Recruit and retain diverse staff that represent the varying identities of our student population. And increase training and accountability around racial and gender-based bias for staff. Make meaningful PD available for staff to increase their understanding and accountability of SEO practices.
Thank you for, for reading those. And certainly the three that are, that y'all see here are, still feel very true. I was just getting, I think, a little bit more concrete perhaps than what those.
And we can certainly hear you better now. Whatever you did, that's much better.
Good.
Ariel says, if I may, I, thank you, Director. I, I, I also had note to bring this up in the discussion. Like, if you look at, yes, Mike Close, what? Never been accused of not being loud enough.
First time for everything.
First time for everything, only in Tuaquilla. As we look at philosophies and priorities, and I might be missing it or, but I think we should make sure it's clear, our priorities that are listed and even the ones you articulated are well-rounded. But when I look at a philosophy, I'm thinking, I'm seeing the absence of what I would call number three on our philosophy, the, the general instruction of the students to state standard or what have you, what our goal is in academic instruction ought to be a main priority for the board and for the district. And yet, there's a lot of attention to the wraparound things that actually make that possible. But I still think we need to have the prize as the North Star is educating our students. And, and, and I had wrote some drafts down and I didn't like any of them, but I did want to bring it because I figured in a, in a group-wise council, or maybe I was missing something. But our priority need to be, ought to be, and ought to be articulated with clarity and vision and simplicity, that we're here to educate students of the Tuaquilla School District. And then I think everything else in those priorities should speak to that. As I look here, I don't see that on there. And I just think, yeah, we can assume that it's obvious, but clearly, everything's not obvious. So I think if that's what we're working from, I think that needs to be included in simplicity, clarity, and inclusivity, that we want to educate all of our students, whether they're citizens, asylum seekers, in transition or whatever, white, black, young, and all the shades in between. So we can articulate that, which speaks to the inclusivity, it speaks to the multilanguage learning, speaks to all that. Because the truth of the matter is, the school district is not set up to meet those other holistic needs. We're here to be a partner with that, but our goal is teaching. Our goal is to get great educators and administrators and professionally development programs that coach them up to do what? Educate our students. So I, I, I was looking forward to us having that and then phrasing some or cultivating some phraseology to put it in there so it's crystal and clear. Or I'm open to be rebuffed and rebuked and say, hey, we've already done that and it's over here. So I'm open to that. But I do think it's, it's strenuous as being under this binding condition has forced us to do that. I think it allows us to recalibrate our true compass. Our true north is still educating our students.
No, I, I completely agree with that. So the, the ones I was going to suggest adding, and I'm trying to formulate in my mind how we kind of combine them all, but I have one called "Design and Implement an Academic Acceleration Program for All Students with Special Focus on Students Who are Two or More Grade Levels Behind and MLL Students." So I, we need some kind of, I agree with you, some kind of academic one there for sure. And the other one is, again, it's kind of obvious, but, you know, financial stability, that's where we need to get to. And the other one that was missing is kind of physical safety of our students. I know a lot of, particularly recently with, you know, what's going on in the community, fights and so forth. We need to really make sure that, because, you know, if, if, that's always our number one priority is to make sure that the students get home safely every day. And then the rest of them are, I mean, yeah, the race and equity work, there's various ways we can work that in versus PD or, you know, whatever, but, and then, yeah, and then the emotional, social-emotional side, yes. So, yeah, when Director was talking about, you know, professional development for race and equity, I mean, to me, that's the race and equity work or the anti-racist work. And you, that, I think you could put into one item and then, yeah, it's interesting, yeah, the retain and diverse staff, I mean, that's always been on our list for a long time. So I don't know, we could, it seems like we're not too far away from coming up, maybe, maybe six or maybe seven, but anyway.
And I think if we, and, and as a preacher, I'm wired to be loquacious. But I think if you, if we, if we navigate the economics of words, some of them can be combined. Like if, if, case in point, if we're bringing up, hey, let's make sure that we articulate that one of our main priorities is educating our students. But you, we can word that in a way that mentions that we're prioritizing educating all of our students, not just dominant culture. That phraseology can be in there. And then, you know, we can deal with the fact that we want to be accountable to having a system of accountability that is, that, that deals with race and equity. But our goal for race and equity is not a utopia, that's somebody else's job. Our job is to make sure that Tuaquilla School District is being responsible in educating all our students and will address that we're all impacted by systemic, a consequence of systemic racism. And we're going to own it, we're going to work at it, we're going to build toward it. So that's what I mean by the economics of word. We can word that we're going to educate all our students in a way that we're highlighting the inclusivity of our district, of the diversity of our district, and the intentionality, that not only do we intend to educate all of our students, but we will be intentional to combat everything that pits itself against that, be it systemic or professional biases or all that. So we can word in, in that way without having to make 12 different other priorities. But, I mean, because that's what we're really trying to do, is incorporate an awareness that we have some hamstrings in race and equity when it comes to educating. Well, part of that is not necessarily leaving race and equity on a silo, implementing it in everything. And I don't mean, you know, to, I don't want it to morph into some political debate on whether or not it's necessary. We already know it's necessary, let's, if we're going to actually use the toolkit that we've been given on all these professional development things that our staff has resentment around, why don't we just start incorporating into that it won't be such an albatross when we got to deal with it? It's in everything. So we should probably start with embedded it in our priorities, particularly from the ones that everybody agrees on, that we're here to educate our students.
Increase anti-racist practices. A response. Months? Oh, sorry, sorry. Often had it on, sorry. But for me, it's about accountability structures along with practices and strategies because it's, we, we recognize things happen. How we respond in either the micro or the macro level, the small or the high level, is critical. And when there's no response, is when students and staff get frustrated because then they see that their, their stories or their, their experiences are invalidated. And so I want to focus in on structures and systems in terms of responsiveness to incidents.
Point well taken. And no response is a response, but it's not an acceptable response.
So it seems to me like we're at a point here where, you know, various, we're going to, we're giving me in a wordsmith mode, which this, this is a bad situation, for, this is a bad forum to do wordsmithing. I think somebody, we need to kind of break off and give a couple of people maybe the assignment to, to take what has been heard today and, and put it down into some language.
And I would argue, let's get it done today. Today, because I think we have a good start.
Yeah.
Think it's phenomenal, but all I would say is, this is, for me, my input is, this is what's missing. But I think it's so important, it ought to be the true North Star. So let's figure it, I wrote some stuff and I didn't like it, so I didn't bring it.
At some point earlier, we have to get language down here, so.
Yeah, yeah, let's get it. But again, my, my, my resolution was grab the, the philosophy number three, edit it and make it a priority on here. That was my solution. Priority, philosophy number three, where did it go? Somebody have it up? I might turn my whole computer off trying to get back to it.
I'm doing this one.
Where it says instructional support, staff work together most effectively when provided appropriate and adequate tools to meet the needs of our students and ensure the highest opportunity for them to succeed. So as I was editing what I had written, I would, I landed on revising number three and, and being more clear that we're going to instruct our students, equip our staff so that they can be most effective. And then articulate, at what? Are we, do we want our kindergarten, first grade through 12th grade? What is our collective goal academically? Hold on, before we get sidetracked, all that other stuff will be in support of that from the emotional well-being, physical safety and all that. But what is our goal? And, and that's why I kept throwing out stuff like state standards, whatever, whatever the graduation requirement. And, and that's why I kept throwing out stuff like state standards, whatever, whatever the graduation requirement is. From kindergarten, we're trying to get them there. That needs to be in here. And so at best, I'm saying this was the foundation of that. Let's change some words in here and, and leave this like it is, if you want, in our, in our philosophy. But morph this into a priority that, that is even, I'm using too many words to say we should say it in less words, that we wanna teach our students toward what? And if it's state graduation requirements, if it's college prep readiness, work readiness, but we ought to articulate that in, in, in a colloquial language of, of scholastic leadership. Let's articulate that, because that's nowhere here. So then.
So I guess my little take variation on that.
I know this thing's killing. For tall people.
Yeah.
I did.
Okay.
Then I feel strong.
My variation on that a little bit is, and we talked about this before, in this district, because, and it was talked about in the initial version of this, the MLL students. I mean, we're up to now like 50% of our students are MLL students. So I think we need a particular, in that, under the instructional umbrella, particular focus in terms of priority on that set of students, because, you know, that's half our students and a lot of them are two or more grade levels behind. And in order to achieve, you know, the graduation and all that.
But that makes sense. If you say this is the goal, and we have multi-slavic people who, the language barrier is, is adversely affecting that, but we haven't made clear that.
Right, right. Yeah, so.
And then that makes sense of all the MLL decisions we have to make along the way.
Right, yeah. I just, and yeah, I'd be okay with either, either way. I mean, I think ultimately, you know, what, I mean, what we're talking about is, at this point, is some of the, what to submit to the, to the ESD to keep them happy on this one. And I'm fine with a high-level one. And then we can understand that, you know, we're gonna internally make sure that we.
Because everything should be working toward that.
Right. So I don't know, what you're proposing to start with these three and then, and then add the one that you just described. And then, you know, I think financial stability needs to be added, just because that's where we're trying to get to. And then the physical safety one.
But I think that's in there, maintaining.
Just add the word physical to the first one, emotional, mental and physical wellbeing of our students.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so I don't know, is somebody?
Somebody describing?
Is anybody keeping notes on? I just, specific.
Sentence, I can instruct, equipped, like equip our staff.
I should have brought it.
Yeah.
All right.
Here we go.
I'm still drafting. So right now, let's, what we'll agree on is.
It was number three.
No, go back, please.
Oh, go back, okay.
While we get to that, let's do the easy part. See where that first priority says emotional health, wellbeing of our students and population in and out of the classroom? Let's add physical on that.
Okay.
So we got that. Everything else, we're still Play-Doh, we haven't made our base yet. Okay, so here's what, here's what, and I, I'm not that creative right now. Here's what it says, "Instructional and support staff work together most effectively when provided with appropriate and adequate tools to meet the needs of our students and to ensure their highest opportunity for them to succeed." Director Larson, I know, I don't wanna write on your thing. So when I look at that, I'm not even sure if that intended to be the North Star for academic instruction, but we're gonna make it that today, not here on here, but on the other sheet. So what should we add when we're talking about meet their, meet the students' needs? How do we put academic need or, or, or how do you articulate? We want our 12th graders to graduate as capable students according to, the standard for graduation is set by Olympia, right?
Yeah, but we want our students to.
No, I, that's what I'm, that's what I'm looking at.
Yeah, but I.
You've got a PhD in this.
So I believe our students, based on like all the research we're doing and everything we're learning about our students, it's not enough to just graduate.
Right.
It's not enough. They need some type of credential, post-secondary experience, either through technical or college or, or something to actually provide for their families if we want them to stay in Tukwila or beyond, to support their families and for citizenship. So it is post-secondary, we're preparing students for post-secondary success. Because what we don't want is, for example, first-generation students to go and get in and then drop out in a year, which is also happening. We want them to be successful in whatever post-secondary learning they're doing. And we want them to thrive through it so that whatever their goals are, whether it is a credential, a trade, or a college, that they actually can achieve those so that they can be productive citizens or a meaningful life. That's what we want, right? And so I'm not saying it is, I'm not, I'm not great with, I'm not a preacher, I'm not an orator, but that's what I want. It's why I think about, when I think about myself as a first gen, right? That's what I want.
We need to, we need to word it in a way that we're intentional. Okay.
And I don't know that it's the one for sure, but ensure our staff are equipped with the tools and resources they need so that our scholars receive the highest level of instruction to succeed after high school. And then I think we could add something, you know, specifically quantifiable.
Did y'all write it down? Somebody record that? That was beautiful.
I just put, it's in the chat.
Okay, because we can't see it. You got that, Deb? I'm happy.
And then I think to Director Larson's point, you know, adding something, if we would like to, something specifically around, you know, whether it's our MML, MLL students or Black and Brown students, whatever it is that we feel like we want that priority to lean in to, or we can keep it broad. I think that's okay as well.
Okay, can you read it back there?
Oh, sure. Me? Yeah.
No, 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 Sister Deborah.
Oh, Deb, sorry.
We can hear her clear.
Okay, ensure our staff are equipped with the tools and resources they need to so that our scholars receive the highest level of instruction to succeed after high school.
I would use the word "all" scholars. And in this text, Twitter, I would use all caps. But how do we put inclusivity? Because that, that will deal with marginalized students, MLL students and all that other stuff. But if we're not intentional to say "all".
Specific targeted focus on our multilingual learners. That they are focused in something, like I said, I'm not the.
Or, or, because I like what Director Carly has, I mean, I'm hearing you. My wheels are rolling, but they're dusty wheels, rusty wheels. Is there an intentionality, and I don't wanna use parenthetically, but to include the "all" that actually reflects, honors the diversity that is our school district, is our Tukwila community? Because I think that encompasses all of it. But it also is intentional to say "all" of our students, because that's what we're getting to, all of our students. And I think everything else works toward that. We're here to serve all of them and we have high expectations for all of our students. So circling back, can you read it back again, what we have there?
So starting with number one, I'm adding physical.
No, just the one we're working on.
Oh, just that one, okay. Ensure our staff are equipped with the tools and resources they need to so that all of our scholars receive the highest level of instruction to succeed after high school with specific targeted focus on our most marginalized learners. That's what I received.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't, I, I get it. Part of me says, hey, maybe we should split that up and start with all of Tukwila School District. Sure, and all our students, et cetera, et cetera. And the next one be also to equip our instructors.
But isn't that in our strategic plan?
Yeah, but I, we need to have it on as priority. But, because here, here's where I'm at. I think when you say specifically for the marginalized, if I'm not marginalized, I don't feel like I'm included. But if you say, if you're specific, if you're intentional to say everyone, that means, "all" means no one's excluded. And then we can add in our other philosophies that we wanna be intentional for the marginalized. We see that they're, you know.
The SMART goals and the strategic plan.
Yeah, yeah.
What you're talking about.
Yeah, so I just think if you say specifically this.
You're talking about a clear vision.
Yeah.
An academic vision.
That's what I mean. So I'm not, I'm just saying, if, if, if we do that, you're actually creating awareness that you didn't intend.
You're creating the academic vision and the strategic plan. Targeted SMART goals to get there.
Because that's our how.
Yeah, that's our how.
Yeah. So let's, let's, is that, I'm respecting what you said, but I think here, we need to highlight the inclusivity of "all". And then when we go to implement it through a SMART goal model, we'll address what gets in the way of "all".
Well, and I think that makes a lot of sense, Director Proctor, because if we're specifically also thinking about anti-racist lens or anti-racist practice, that is, that is going to address, right? Those marginalized identities that are often, you know, yeah. So I mean, I, I would agree, I think that, that, that this one can say "all" are scholars. And then, yeah, speak more specifically in other.
Yeah, so we don't need to add the specificity of the MLL and the marginalized students. But if we are intentional to deal with the "all", now we can go to our SMART goals and our approaches and identify in all our reporting who's being left out of this true north. And then, then the work begins. All right, so if we do that and just stick with the "all", all right, can, Sister Deborah, you're working over there, you're gonna have carpal tunnel leave over there. Kimmy, give me what you got, please.
Ensure our staff are equipped with the tools and resources they need so that all of our scholars receive the highest level of instruction to succeed after high school.
Great. I got, I have to throw one, not even a monkey wrench. What if we put a goal for our scholars first? We're prioritizing and then ensure that our instructors and staff have the tools. Because remember, we're prioritizing. And at this point, the students are always first. And because the students are first, we're willing to do what we need to do to make sure the staff have what they need to meet the goal. But I would argue, flip that, the syntax of that, and put, put our goal for our students first and the fact that we are committed to prioritize making sure as best as we can physically, fiscally, to ensure that our staff has what they need. For what? To meet the goal, which then opens up to the accountability. Because if, if we're breaking our necks to get the staff what they need and we're starting not meeting the goal, there's an accountability form that needs to take place. But I would, I would argue if we're prioritizing, put the students first. What does that look like, Miss Deb? If I had my red pen, I would just take that little squiggly and switch it, and then that means do this.
So all of our school, all of our scholars receive, that's what I did.
Yeah, yeah, come on.
Okay, all right. All of our scholars receive the highest level of instruction to succeed after high school. Ensure our staff are equipped with the tools and resources they need.
My work here is finished. Great job. I think you got it. Any questions on that? Does that work? Almost. Come on, Charlie. We're missing Charlie's input.
I'm, I'm really close, but not after high school. I would just say, as they're within the Tukwila School District. So the, the ones that we have for only one year, where they're gonna get the best services for that one. So I, I agree that your goal is for after high school, but that, as a Tukwila school, our philosophy should be they get the best while they're here at our district.
I love that.
Whatever term, whatever term that's gonna be for them.
What'd you say, Director Carly?
I just said, I love that. I think that that really speaks to that every student that is here, no matter for how long, whether it's a year, whether it's a month, whether it's their entire educational career, that we are investing and pouring into them with the highest regard. So I, I just was, I agree.
All right, so I wish, I wish I could see the chat, because I don't want Deb to work.
All of our schools receive, all of our scholars receive the highest level of instruction while in Tukwila School District?
I agree wholeheartedly what Brother Charlie said. The dreaded "but" would be, even if we left it like it was, a student and their family dropping in or transitioning out would still know that our goal, even for the kindergartner, if he or she was staying through 12th grade, we're still trying our best to matriculate them to academic success, which would be the graduation that not only is just getting your diploma at a minimal need, but preparing you for the future. So yes, but if you, if we take it out, then I think we take more out than we intended.
I think it's "yes and".
Yeah, so can we incorporate that?
I think it's "yes and" because for me, as a superintendent, I would love every child to want to stay here, right, till 12th grade, no matter when they came, third, fourth, fifth grade, like, that this is the best place. Even if they went to another place temporarily for a year and they had the opportunity to come back, they're coming back because they feel so supported here and they see their future here. That's what I would want, that they, that they would want to finish their schooling here, even if they can or can't. So that whatever education they get, year one, year two, year three, or they transition back and forth, but they're coming back and they're gonna fight hard to stay here, which I have a student right now doing, fighting to stay here in our high school because of, because their family moved, but that's what they want to do. The student wants to stay. So I just, I just, and that to me is beautiful, right? Because that means that there is good work happening in the school that's supporting that student.
Let me circle back and offer my apologies. Forgive me, Brother Charlie, you know you're my man. We were trained not to say "but", right? We just came through a whole trade on that. And you just reminded me. I think that's a great idea. Let's figure out how we can incorporate that with a "yes and", because I think, let's figure out how we're intentional. Because I still think we need to deal with, our goal is to get students from K through 12. I'm a high school teacher, to meet all their graduation requirements, if they wanna go to college, wanna go to Army, Marines, whatever. We wanna help them be successful. Now, we wanna also own the fact, because so many of our students transition in and out, we wanna be intentional to say while they're with us, we're gonna give them the best that they have, the, the best that we have, so they can be successful, even if they don't stay through 12.
Why can't we put Tukwila School District at the beginning?
That's what I was thinking.
All of our Tukwila School District scholars, highest level of instruction.
Or all of our, let's try, yes, all of, start, put it, put it, let's, what does it sound like here? All of our, what'd you say, scholars? Come on.
All of our Tukwila School District scholars.
No, no, this, not, not Tukwila School District. Start with what you had before.
All of our scholars receive the highest level of instruction. Currently, we have while in Tukwila School District to succeed after high school.
I think that's it, because that deals with both of them, or some variation of that. Because that deals with while they're in our district and our goal is to get them out of high school, even if they leave in the fifth grade. But, and I, and I don't think it's a stretch, because as the more I hear Charlie's wisdom, is that it's owning the fact that our demographic is often transitional, not only first generation, but folk who just got here. Not everybody's an asylum seeker, but you got, you got all of that in our district. So I think, I think, does that accomplish what you want, or what you were, what you were thinking? Oh, let's tweak it some more.
No, I think so. I think, and the point is, the point is, is that we're getting this to the ESD, right, by the 15th. I think that, I think we, we can, and I'll refer to President also, that is this gonna be good start that we can send off? I know we're gonna come back and re-grind these again later on and at the, at the session to really, to knock them down. And then all of our subs, would this be suffice so that we could move forward? Submit these to the ESD in compliance with that? And then we'll re-grind these out, basically, because we're, we're coming up with five here, right? five here, right, at this point? Oh, no, and plus the, plus the other ones that Hoover wanted to, to add on to it. So I think, I'm, I'm just wondering if, are we at a place, can we agree? Because we could spend quite a bit of time trying to do it. Do we agree that we're at a spot that we could move, submit these, and then move on, and then revisit them as a board?
President Hoover came through with a suggestion.
Right.
All our scholars receive the highest quality instruction to succeed while in our school community and beyond high school.
That's why you're the president. I get it.
I do. I second.
Alright, alright, now, Director Larson, you had some other.
No, not in that one.
No, we're done with that.
Yeah, we're done with that one. The, just financial stability.
I think that's right here, the following requirements, OSPI, which includes the funding right at the very beginning, so at a zero balance. I'm, I would agree with financial, that's my, what you're talking about right there, because of that, why we're here, is, is why I was seeking we would have the financial, zero percent. Because that's, that's where my brain goes, my brain goes to the business part of it, that we're going to, you know, follow, follow through with the CFOs.
Well, of course, zero fund balance, that's, that's one point at one time. I mean, what we need is ongoing financial stability. I think that's wider scope, but.
And I'd even like to put it, you know, go, we could, we could easily submit our, because we're supposed to be at six percent, right? We could easily just, what we already have in place that we should be following could just be put right in there, because that's, that's what we should be doing and should have been doing, right?
For purposes of this, if, if we just put financial stability, then fine, and then, okay, we did with the physical safety, yeah, that's, that's the only other. And then, I think, and this is not hard, just take whatever, what are we up to now, five, whatever, five of them, and just slot them under the, the appropriate strategic plan areas, which isn't hard to do. Just so that we're kind of providing that connection to the strategic plan.
Agreed.
So what I have then is, it will start with physical, emotional, and mental wellbeing. Maintain and increase supports, that stays the same. Continue and increase anti-racist practices in the count of, practices, accountability, district-wide. And then, all of our scholars receive the highest quality of instruction to succeed. We have already done that one. Sure, financial stability.
And that maintain and increase support for multilingual, I think that's encompassed under the one that we had the long discussion about instruction. So I think that one could just be deleted, maintain and support, because it's, it's covered under the.
I think my only, I think, pushback against it being covered under the academic supports is it's more than just the academic supports, right? It's, it's the translation services to parents, it's, you know, in, actually increasing the interpretation services that we have, even like at our board meetings, we should be doing things like that, right? So I think it's more than just about the academic success and more about how we ensure that our multilingual families are connected to their students' education.
It's good.
Yeah.
The district.
Point taken. We could leave it there.
Very good. I agree.
Point taken. I would just, I would just hesitate it, because I heard what Director Larson said when he met with the expert there, but I still would put the student one at the top of this list. Alright, I think that's great. Did we get, have we encompassed the ones Director President had already?
Yeah.
Let's rock and roll.
They were just extra ideas, so.
I love it when we get stuff done.
Were there any changes to the board philosophy?
Not by me.
Not by me.
Not changes. I do think, again, as I mentioned before, that there might be some opportunity for really identifying how those philosophy components look like in the implementation. And so that doesn't have to be done today, for the purposes of like getting this document submitted to me, the requirement, but I do think there might be some value in highlighting what some of those might be, so that we can be really clear with community about how, how these philosophy points look in, you know, in actuality.
And I agree with you, Director Hoover, just because what you just brought up, just even like meetings right now, having access to our multilingual families that don't speak English, like we're talking right now. How can they access that? So that, those bullet points are gonna need to be definitely dealt with. I think we need to be sure, because that's, like, even this moment, it's like, aha, yeah, that's an aha moment. That's exactly what we need. So we can't get those lost.
And I'm just gonna state for the record, is so that we are, the district is providing to the state and Puget Sound ESD and OSPI, the budget priorities for the board, we're submitting to them the, the high level, the, the top priorities as well. At where we're sending the budget priorities, the budget philosophy, in addition, we're gonna be sending the presentation from today that was presented at the work session to the entities that have requested it. Correct? I just want to make sure we're all in agreement. Alright, thank you.
And the only other thing, and this is for future, this is not for the April 15th, but, you know, we, we talked about some more specific things related to budget priority, things like Avid, things like, you know, dual language programs, and though we can discuss that internally later, because I just want to, as I said, I just want to make sure if there are board members that have specific items, then we want Dr. Perdros to know about those, so that there won't be a surprise when later on, oh, well, you didn't fund that, or something. So that's, that's, but that's, that's not for the April 15th, so, fine.
Okay, so is there any more comments on this, or are we able to move along on our agenda? Anything else that needs to be talked about this?
Great job, team. Thank you.
Alright, we will be moving on to the strategic plan, engaged learners.
Good afternoon, Alcentino Executive Director, Multilingual Services and Pre-K 12 Education. Thank you.
So thanks for the opportunity to go through our strategic plan, specifically goal number two, which is engaged learners. So we will go through for you each of the sections of this goal and our expected outcomes, what our results are so far at the mid-year point, and then our action steps to accomplish the goals according to the timelines. Go to four. Okay, on this slide, our goal, our desired outcome, as you see, student learning increases as a result of students taking an active role in their own goal-setting and progress monitoring. And the measurement comes in percentage of students setting their own personal academic growth goals. So our goal here was 100% of students in the grades K8 will set their own student growth goals for reading and math after they've taken the iReady diagnostic in the fall. And the right side just shows the tool that their schools are using. The top part of that is data that we pulled directly from the iReady website specific to the school, and the bottom part is a section that we added as a district for, to make it easier for schools to work with the students to set their goals. On slide five, this shows our mid-year progress. And you see on the table on the right, on the upper right, it show our goal was 100%, Tuckaway Elementary came close. Other two elementaries are getting there, and Shawalter, there's quite a gap between where we want to be and where they currently are. Our, during, as far as progress, fall conferences, teachers are conferring with students and families to set their growth goals based on the data they're sharing. Let's see, for all schools, we acknowledge that the percentages were not entirely impacted, but somewhat impacted by the fact that the number of families have enrolled after the fall conference window. So you couldn't have completed the conference when families came after the time we measured the fall conference. There's at least, you know, somewhat of an impact. Our next steps to move forward with this would be, we'll be doing an analysis based on our racial equity toolkit, as we do for each of our goals and outcomes. Identifying specifically which families did not participate and determine what actions are needed to minimize or eliminate the barriers to participating. Our community and family liaisons will provide support in making these connections. And during the spring conference window, which has, elementaries have audio and taken that, the high school is this month, and then Shawalter is in May. That's when schools are reviewing the student goal progress and making outreach efforts to connect with the families. So they, at the beginning of the year, they outreach to everybody, but now is the time they look at who maybe didn't participate and look at what, the street data, why not, and what, what are we, can we do to take away those barriers? And also will inform their comprehensive needs assessment, which will be happening during the rest of the spring to, that drives the revisions to their school improvement plans.
Yes, I'm, I'm wondering on this one in relation to attendance. I mean, there's fairly strong correlations between attendance and, you know, achievement, academic achievement, and I'm just, I mean, I know you have later, it's kind of a school-based goal for attendance, but wouldn't it be good if, if a student set a goal for, I mean, I don't, you know, be interested, I haven't heard yet whether you've dived down into the, you know, the places, we have some pretty low attendance, regular attendance rates at some schools, and so why is that happening? And is it, you know, is it because students don't have it in their mind that it's important to go to school? I mean, I, I don't know, but, so it seems like there could potentially be a tie here between if a student decided, okay, this is a priority for me to get to school every day, because I know we've done some, some work with that in the past, that there, that therefore, they're gonna achieve their, you know, their math and reading goals, because they're gonna be there more often. So I just, it's just something to, I guess, think about as we go, as we go dive into, you know, what the, what the underlying causes are here.
Right, and that's a very logical part of the whole street data.
Right.
You know, pursuit, working with the parents and students to see, what do we not know that are the barriers?
Because sometimes giving, I mean, student agency and buying into their, you know, how they can, what they can do to achieve these higher goals is pretty powerful sometimes, so.
And just often just them knowing what our goal is for them.
Right.
And that helps them recalibrate what they might have had for their.
Right.
Yeah, if I could just, I'm glad you brought that up, Director Larson, I was actually thinking something similar, I guess more in relation to 11, Slide 11, as we'll get to in a minute, but you know, thinking about the correlation to attendance, and as we're gonna look at the discipline report later, right, suspension. So I'm curious, like, how those overlap with each other, right? So if a young person is suspended, obviously, they get marked as not attended, so it impacts their attendance record that then ultimately impacts their, perhaps, their ability to perform, right? So it's like taking a deeper dive into the discipline data, also into the belongingness data, right? Because a young person can feel and believe about themselves one thing, but if they step into a building and they feel excluded, or they feel, do not feel connected to the school, to other people within it, that is also gonna show up as a negative. Often, we're not gonna see the type of academic success and progress that we might otherwise see if that young person is feeling that sense of belonging and connectedness, and those discipline rates are going down, so they're actually staying in school more often.
Yes, and that's a great connection even to our next goal, the part of, because of the belongingness. If we could look at slide six, then it's direct connection here. And students feel safe and supported, schools have positive relationships with peers and teachers. So we were, and this, so the peers are goal, percentage of fourth through 12th grade students responding positively on this educational effectiveness survey. And there is a collaboration interpersonal skills, and we're shown that the goal grows from 50, 65% of the last survey to more than 78 for this time. And so this survey has not taken place yet, but when it does, that will be one of our focuses, because we know all these things interweave and go together to impact students' opportunity to succeed and participate.
Can I ask a quick question there? Thinking about collaboration and interpersonal skills, what instructional strategies have been explored and implemented to hopefully see successes in this area? Because when we think about collaboration, particularly, I mean, these are, again, social skills that need to be taught and learned and practiced. And so, yeah, what strategies, instructional strategies have been implemented and were explored to really actually see hopeful progress in this area?
Part of it would be project-based learning, so students are building the skills, learning how to work interdependently on projects. And they see how each person's contribution to the project is for the greater good, and they develop the social skills and the comfort with peers, as well as learning the academic content, actually doing a project. So that's one, and that also addresses interpersonal skills, because that, as a teacher, that's a natural opportunity to teach the communication. How do you work with a colleague, especially when you're disagreeing on how to proceed in the project? So that's a great opportunity for learning from a teacher's standpoint with their kids.
Yeah, thank you so much for offering those examples. I, I'm curious, though, from what I understand, like, those are not district-wide strategies that we're implementing, and likely more of a classroom-by-classroom. So again, thinking about district-wide, how are we, because I agree, project-based learning is a great strategy with which to do that, but if we're not employing it in all classrooms, then not only is the, are the opportunities limited, depending on the classroom that young people are in, but their ability to like practice and learn these skills is gonna be really limited as well.
I'd like to add that we are working on, in, I would say, many, many spaces across the school district this year on increasing opportunities for student talk. We, we, we are working with high school staff, middle school staff, elementary staff, on how do you first use, we've used different protocols to examine what kind of student talk is happening in classrooms, because high-quality instruction is where kids are doing more talking than adults. First of all, we have to, we had to work on finding a baseline, like, who's doing the most talking, and how do we know? And then the next step comes in, I think particularly about, in our learning labs this year, we've talked with teachers about how do they set up opportunities for student talk, like through math, like with a what doesn't belong protocol. So kids are interacting with, like, how do we decide which thing doesn't belong, and there's not a right answer, that's part of it, so that there's, you have to provide different evidence. And then coming back and examining, what did we hear students say? We've done a lot of videotaping across classrooms this year for our early, early career teachers, teachers in different subject areas across all grade levels, where they're then examining with their colleagues afterwards, like, oh, what did the student say? How do we see? When I asked a question, what kind of a response was I expecting? Am I looking for something that expects kind of a higher level of thinking? Am I looking for something that expects students to have talked to each other? So part of engaging kids and developing collaboration is not just providing them opportunities to speak with and work with one another, but how are we ensuring that what we're having them do is actually digging into really deep learning? Those are areas in which we've started to work on this year, as we move more into universal design for learning next year, and having that as the base for all of our professional learning. That will be something that all staff will have opportunities to see and learn more about, not just the people who have been choosing to participate in professional learning opportunities this year. And Chief Whitbeck has been working with principals during their principal learning to also, to practice with principals, so that they can engage with their staff in different types of coaching conversations around student engagement and talk in the classroom. Thank you.
And we are having meetings this spring with our principals and assistant principals. We will be having joint meetings as well with them and with our racial equity leads. Each school has a couple representatives, and they're gonna be collectively designing some threads of our professional development plan for next year and beyond. And a key part of that, of course, we want to make sure that's the way we, like, we can have our best chance of assuring the racial equity is a key part, is woven into everything we do. And so once every teacher has experienced that, get their hands in, actually living the training, then we would expect we're gonna see that in every classroom. And so once every teacher has experienced that, gives their hands in, actually living the training, then we would expect we're gonna see that in every classroom. On this desired outcome, students feel safe and supported at school and have positive relationships with peers and teachers. And we are, according to our strategic plan, the data we're looking at here is documented student discipline. So the number of documented discipline reports will be reduced in all five schools by three percent in this school year. Focus area is specific, since we have maybe a dozen indicators in, within the broader scope of student discipline, we're focused on inappropriate behavior category. And the number of documented discipline reports for inappropriate behavior would be reduced from seventy-four last school year to sixty in this school year, and at least a one percent reduction each following year. So that's the strategic plan goal. Slide nine shows where we are so far. And the narratives, the number of student discipline reports for the focus area dropped from forty-five in the first half of last school year to twenty-five in the first half of this school year, so we're making good progress there. And our schools are on track to be within our end-of-year goal of a maximum of sixty such reports. And for some perspective and context for the table to the right, on the increases, we see, if you look at the table, we see Cascade View has made significant progress in this indicator, as well as Tuckwell Elementary, Thorndike is slightly up, and there's an increase at both our secondary schools. A little context within our bullet points is, the increases at Thorndike, Schwalter and Foster are partly due to increased use of the district form. Thorndike shows a small increase, but you see, they had such a small number in the first place last year that we still wanted to go down, but they only had six last year, so it is still significantly well below our other schools. On affecting the data both at Foster and Schwalter, after I had a chance to interview the principals about this, they mentioned that there are just, it's, the scale was a number of quite a bit of increase of total student enrollment, so it seems proportionally, if nothing else changes, we might see a higher number of reports. And they mentioned a number of incidences that happened this year, that there may have been a a disciplinary referral, but it might have involved ten or twelve kids in the same event. So when they're added as separate students, it really increases their numbers. So that was what they said is different, what they did not see last year, and that was a big impact there. For our next steps.
Can I just clarify?
Please do.
This is, this is Dr. Pedrosa, sorry, just for the, just for the, so what you're, just wanna restate what you just said, so what you're saying is, at the middle and the high school, I've already seen the report, but I just wanna ask for clarifying, but at the middle of the high school, that the incidences have increased larger number of students, which is why you see more of the individual reporting increase at this.
Yes.
That, I just wanted to clarify that.
The other thing that I was noticing, so later in this meeting, we have the presentation of reported offenses and everything, and what I noticed was, yeah, the category inappropriate behavior went down, but the category disruptive conduct went up. So, so, I mean, this is the problem we've had for years, there's a whole bunch of categories, you know, disrespect, disruptive conduct, inappropriate behavior, insubordination, listen, I mean, there's a whole set of categories that any particular item could be placed in, and if you just, the problem is, if you just focus on one of those categories, then people just put it in another category, and you haven't really addressed the issue. So I think, I think this particular one needs to be kind of reframed a little bit. I'm not sure, you may need to look at the whole, the whole set of reporting items and not just one, because then you can just manipulate it.
Yes, and there is variance in, you know, each school is trying their best to determine what is the correct title for the type of behaviors.
Right.
We know those have worked with schools, it's hardly ever do you have an exact type of behavior that exactly fits a category. So they just say, okay, in this case, that's more of this than this. And so one thing we want to do to make this maybe easier and more understandable for our schools and for students and families is to spend more time clarifying, come to agreement of what each term, what's the definition we will all go with for each of the terms, and possibly, like, I think, Dr. Lush, and you referenced, looking at some things that we should maybe combine, because they're so similar, it's hard for schools and for us to know what's different between some of them, so those are some of the factors we're being looking at.
And I don't know if, does OSPI require these particular categories?
And right, so in that case, it's a two-track, what we must report for compliance, and also what we would use for compiling our data for our benefit.
Right, 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 yeah.
I think for me, the biggest aha for me on all of this is that we still have, and we talked about this, a significant work around anti-racist discipline. Like specifically calling that out, and what does that really mean and look like, and so, because you also look at the numbers, we're looking at the whole school numbers, but then later on with the report, then you break it down by race, and the disproportionality is still there. I mean, you can look at percentages, or you can break it down by students, but there's still disproportionality, and for me, that's one of the goals we just talked about, just to share in our last extended cabinet meeting that we had with Dr. Rogers Ard, who came and met with, we had the principals and everyone here, as well as the directors. And talking about that has to be the shift that we have to make, is really targeting the work around anti-racist disciplinary practices at all of our schools, so everyone was in agreement there, that that's the goal. And then we have a meeting coming up on April eighteenth with the equity leads and the principals, so what does that actually mean and look like? Right, and then they can't answer all of that today, but they can start drafting out some of their strategies and thinking around the work. But that's one of the district-wide goals that I think we're gonna have focus on for that work, because if the kids aren't in school, then they're not gonna learn. And so we gotta, we gotta figure out what that looks like within, and what are the strategies around this, and so that might mean we have to re-talk with belong partners about being more intentional. So one of the suggestions we talked about, because we had a planning meeting, was instead of talking about all the strategies, why don't we just start with the data? And talking, and like unpacking the data and using that as a problem of practice discussion, then building out the strategies from there. And putting that data front and center in front of teachers, at least what's happening in their own buildings.
Yeah, because the other thing is, ultimately, a lot of that stuff, you need to get down to a classroom level, because if so much, if it's happening, and I think we've heard anecdotal, that it's happening in certain classrooms, and that's where the focus needs to be, but you can't, you know, because of the, you know, purple laws or whatever, and we can't present that here, but you better be doing that at the school level, yeah, okay.
It has to be our next step, because if you're trying all these professional development, and you have similar results, then we have to re-shift our priorities and our strategy.
A slide.
Hold on, please, just one more thing while we're here, I just wanna, I wanna kind of put, so learning, my spot, my position here a little bit, is put a motion forward, I'd like a motion forward for our staff here and see if anybody would agree to second, I would like to see this data done by, I'd like to know, let's take Cascade View. I'd like to know, what's the breakdown racially Cascade View, then when we have an incident, racially, what, you know, the broken down of who, what that looks like for the student, and then even down to the grade, so fourth grade, this person, you know, that checks this box is here, and then I want, so the data's done like that, instead of how I see it here, it's, it's, it's too, I get the whole school, but I wanna see, because then I think that'll also help some of the questions I'd like to ask in the future, and then it may also help your staff to identify what, where we're at with specifically maybe individuals that's having more difficulty or need more help.
I think I hear your request, but I'm not a little foggy. On a macro level, we're getting data that says discipline in the building or the district looks like this. Submacro, not quite micro, but submacro breaks down racial demographic that's disproportionate. But if I understand, because I want to second your motion, but if I understand your motion, I don't know that just because it was a documented discipline that it was what's its racial. But what we see is systemically discipline actions break down through racial lines, so the way you worded your request is kind of leads to infer that it was a racial incident.
Okay, agreed.
I don't know that it documents like that, I don't think the data will show that.
How do you think it's documented?
I, I just think it's documented that this student X, who is a male,
Okay.
brown or black, sent out of room, referred, or this, that, and the other, but what happens is you take all the data, and then you start looking. I don't know that we can do this, but what happens is, black and brown kids get sent out of the room for stuff white kids don't get sent out of room for. That's what, but I don't think the data's gonna show that, if you don't get to the micro level. So what we, what we're really dealing with is how is anti-racism dealing with how middle school issues are handled? And so I don't know, and so if we want that information, I think we gotta word it different, because the data's not gonna show that. Data's not gonna show Jason Point, let's take it out of T S D. There was a, a few years ago, there was a lady, a young lady at Stanford University who was being sexually assaulted outside of a bar in Palo Alto. The action was caught, so it wasn't inferred, it wasn't his word against hers, by another student. Reported, arrested. He's acquitted, given a thirty days, dismissed. And the judge's report was where he comes from a good family, he has a bright future ahead. We don't wanna send him to jail, because this decision could ruin his life. Yet, it ruined hers. And yet, if a black and brown young man had been caught sexually assaulting the same white girl, you and I know that that would have been handled different. That's what the data shows, but the way it's worded, it won't. Does a judge have discretion? Yeah, but it had no regard for all the therapy this young lady's gonna go through. Anybody outside who were reading the discord would say, under no circumstances is the judge's decision of any merit. What do you mean, he made a decision, he flushed his Stanford degree down the toilet. But when we're talking about discipline, we know that that discipline would have been handled different. So how do we, if we wanna get to the weeds of that, I don't know that we're gonna be able to get to the weeds of that, looking at the referral. What we will get to the weeds of is, okay, are these pattern of referrals that show up disproportionately for these students, are you telling me that the other students in the building don't engage in similar behavior that ain't being reported in discipline? Those are, those are anti-racist conversations.
So how do we get there? How do we ask for that information to get there, because if we do nothing?
No, yeah, I agree with you, I just didn't want you to go down.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate that.
And I'll defer to Dr. Pedrosa, but I think bringing the principals, the counselors, I think, on the front-end professional development for the teachers, on how to handle. Why, why is this your response for this? But, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, so having been a principal in the past that actually had this data, so the principals and the school teams have access to their data, so all of this is broken down by school level. I'll just add, having done this before as a principal, it's very delicate, right, it's a delicate work. So if I have the data where I see, and this, I'll just use my real-life scenario about it, because I wrote a paper about it one time. I saw that in fourth grade, right, and in eighth, sixth grade, that my black and brown boys, right, were being disproportionately disciplined, right? Publishing that, right, there might be lots of reasons, there might be a big bubble of something, like whatever, but there's also teacher willingness to change and support new strategies and all of that, and that's, that's actually a fine art. It's not quite as easy as you must do this, it's more about really supporting them and actually working with them to change their beliefs, to recognize their biases, right? And to also recognize when they're, I call it, so we talk a lot, belong partners came in or talked about the amygdala's being hijacked, right, remember they said that, like, students are stressed, and they go from zero to one hundred, guess what, the adults do too. When the adults are triggered, or if they got spit on, or if, you know, whatever, the adults are triggered too, and the research shows, even if you have somebody who's done tons of professional development on bias work, when they are hungry, stressed, tired, fatigued, or angry, guess what? They're gonna revert back to that, but that biased decision-making. And it can be reversed if they recognize that, that they're in that state, right? So it's a very, think of all of us as parents, right, where we've been frustrated with our children, same thing. And here we're talking about people dealing with strangers' kids. And so it's very, very nuanced, and very, very, and so it has to be done delicately, right? Because what you want to do is you don't wanna shut down, it's like racist, anti-racist work. You don't wanna shut down people, if you shut them down, if you shame them or blame them, then they're just gonna shut down, out of fear, out of whatever. What you want them to do is to be open to the learning, so that they can shift and adapt and do better, right? When you know better, you do better, and that's what the goal is, and so the schools all have access to the data. If we didn't make a motion to do anything like that, which is fine, we have to remember that if the N size is below a certain number, as you all know, then that's identifiable, and we can't do that for purple violations. However, but you can get a bigger N size if you lump, like, for example, elementary schools together, like, all the elementaries together, we could do that, all the elementaries are doing this, and then we lump this middle and high school together, and say, all secondary, and we can lump it by race. It won't tell you school by school, but it'll give you a picture of what's happening in the elementary versus what's happening in middle and high school, which as we, so I was a K eight principal, I was an elementary principal, and I was a high school principal. Discipline looks different at all those levels, really different, and the teacher's approach to discipline is also really different on all of them as well.
So, thank you, I want to circle back to Charlie, because as she said, we don't have access to that, micro data, principals do. So I think the conversation is, okay, we look at the data, you can break it down by schools, school, building, school, race. But I was an assistant principal, and so what happens is, you start noticing that all the referrals are coming from this section. From this teacher, or sometimes, most of it is math. Why? Because the students are pushed in an uncomfort zone, so then the data begins to trickle down, so now you're talking with the principals who have that access. And then they can, hey, I need to deal with Mr. Jones, I need to deal with, and, but it's still delicate, because they are masters of their universe, and you have to, you know, it's a delicate. But we also have this toolkit that now we can identify in their building. Here is where this stuff applies. Let's work out some strategies, that's, that professional development stuff that we roll eyes at, this is where that applies. And so from a board, I think our role is to make sure the principals are equipped with the tools, and, and, and are holding their buildings accountable to what the true north our priorities are. Because if I'm sending all the brown kids out, my all is deficient. If I'm blaming the students for why I can't reach them, our all. And so.
I guess what I'm asking then is, I'm asking, and then help me, the board helped me, and Dr. Pedrosa helped me, because what I don't want is something like the budget. I don't want it to be so far removed, because anybody can tell me, I get to sit in front of everybody here, right, I don't do the grind, days in and day out. I want some sort of check and balance in there, that we're hearing that this is changing, you know what I mean, that there is, so if I can get some of the nitty-gritty of what we can share, right, in there, then it's, then it doesn't seem to get away, because then the questions can be asked at this level, and then from us, then we, then we're asking Dr. Pedrosa, right, since we're her supervisor, and then she's gonna go down, and then it trickles down from there, right?
Let me respond.
Yeah.
So when I see the first semester dis- So when I see the first semester discipline report, when I see a hundred and thirty three discipline reports, discipline reports from a Tuck Willa elementary school.
Right.
It's time to visit.
Yeah.
Help me, and, and it's, and it's not a shot at the principal. Help me understand the data I'm looking at. Uh, it's a new principal there. But we know that, um, what, how is this being handled? Is it, is it new documentation? Is it new accountability to documentation? But it's an elementary school. Uh, and so to answer your question is, I think when you see the data, now it's time for, let's go ask the micro question.
Okay, agreed.
I think, um, kind of on the, on this note, I think what would be helpful for me, um, you know, because I think this is another example of something that, um, you know, the previous board has been kind of raising some alarm bells at for a little while, right? We've been talking about it for a while, um, before Dr. Pedrosa was here. Um, and so, you know, I believe that there are some active steps that are happening now. Um, and so I wonder, um, if, uh, if Charlie, if this would feel good for you is like, I think what would help me is to see, um, maybe it's in writing or maybe something, um, from Dr. Pedrosa. Here is the plan. Here is how we are, um, creating the systemic mechanism with which to address these concerns on a, on a more consistent basis. Um, so that when we get data like this, then we can lean into that systemic approach and that systemic thing that has been created. And I know that like you're working on that again, as you mentioned, I know the equity team, the district equity team is really invested, um, in thinking about, um, our approaches to discipline, right? And so, um, what are those things that are happening behind the scenes right now? To give the board something a little bit more concrete to say, yes, we know that you are working with the folks who do have that information, who can have those micro conversations. And, and then we can work on what is that mechanism for reporting some of those things back to us in a way that, you know, still honors anonymity and, um, uh, you know, building leaders.
And I, can I make a suggestion, but back to what you, because you made a motion. So I want to make, um, a suggestion, um, that, uh, since we're having our meeting on April 18, um, that the team and I, and we're actually also having disciplinary conversation as well. Because as you noticed on the next step bullets too as well, I'll just, I just know from, for a fact, for example, some of the students in some of these situations actually are students with I E Ps that actually, um, behavior is part of their, uh, I E P plans. And they've had multiple referrals. So that's, we're actually having that conversation as well. So I basically, I'm saying, I know some of the players because we're having planning meetings around that. Um, so we're having some meetings as a team to talk about it from a special education standpoint. We're having a meeting with the equity leads and the principals to talk about it from a macro. So there's micro and macro happening right now. My, my, my suggestion to your motion is that we, um, that we make sure that I send you the plan after those meetings conducted, so I can send it to you in an update before May 1st, so we can work on developing some type of plan because we have to have a plan in place, A, for the rest of the year and also for, um, to start launching in the fall. Because it's actually going to be at the all staff kickoff where I'm going to announce this is the goal, right? These are the goals. And then, um, so I'll do that as a plan. And then to get at the question around reporting out, we, this was a first semester report out on the discipline. We have to update that for the end of the year anyway, to send to the board after the end of the year. And then I will commit to adding an elementary race report out and then a secondary race report. It's at least you have some more information if that works for you.
It, it does, and I'll, I'll take back my motion because now that getting it through the talk, it, it does help. And, and thank you Proctor and President Hoover. So I think then what I'm asking, because I think I've got it figured out with the help of my colleagues here, is what I'm asking is beat me to the punch. So if, if right now, if I say, why does Tuck Willa have eighty six? And your answer is going to be?
So the, I'm going to back up to get to that point. The school district last year adopted a common incident reporting form for all schools to use. Tuck Willa got on it right away and put every single thing that came forward into that form. Whether or not it rose to the level of a disciplinary consequence, things like conversations between the counselor and the student or the principal and the student. And so they took really seriously reporting every single type of behavior that happened. Where some of the other schools chose only to report out on the state required reportable offenses on the discipline referral form. So that gave us as a system, some data that we needed to level set to an extent about when, when the report form is used and for what purposes go into Skyward. So that's a, one of the changes that we're working towards bringing things. We went from a place where all of the schools were, were choosing to report different things in Skyward, except for like suspensions and expulsions were always going in, but some were putting other types of things in and some people weren't. So we went through a level setting period. It's not that Tuck Willa, all of a sudden, things were, so many things were happening last year that were terrible for kids. It's that they were implementing this new reporting mechanism, which then also by seeing a large number of incidents for them, allowed us as a system to come back and try to reset the level there. And so, um, this year, there's been more of that work. But I think what Chief Whitbeck was talking about in terms of having common definitions in terms of what gets coded as what and how it means, like that shows us that there's more work to be done. And then to Dr. Pedrosa's point about what's happening to students, because we're not going to know what doesn't happen to kids because that doesn't get reported. The kid who does something disruptive and the teacher doesn't send them out of the classroom, we don't know what not happening.
Well, even in your, and thank you for that clarity. But as I listened to your explanation, if Tuck Willa last year was implementing this comprehensive reporting, then the racial variance would be across the board. It wouldn't be like, i- if, if they were just encompassing all behaviors in that, then we shouldn't see any racial disparities. Everybody should be, they would be reporting on everything kids do. Uh, and so I'd be interested. It's, I hear you, but what, you know, chances are it still shows up discrepancies, disparity. So, um, so these are just conversations that we, as we set our priorities, we cannot drive right by. We have to, uh, uh, and I think I begin, it begins with leadership, Dr. Pedrosa's vision, um, uh, principals, and the principals are accountable to us too. And I'm a kind of a hands-on kind of guy, so I would do a walkthrough. I wouldn't want to meet, I would want to be on some of those committees this time because we have to answer to the community. Well, how did you all handle that? Uh, and so I'm excited about it, uh, but I think we need, we got work to do. So thank you. Thank you for your reporting and, and explaining.
Yeah, I think we've got. Just, just so I circle back though, I just want to finish. So what, what I was saying, so when I said your answer was, so what I need then, and what I'm asking for after hearing from everybody, is exactly that. So we don't go through the numbers, just beat me to my question. Already come with, okay, this is why Tuck Willa reports. We all can see that it's, you know, it was higher. Just beat me to it. Say the reason is because, you know, instead of us going with, okay, Gabe, this is, we're going to have a decrease of, you know, down to sixty or something. Just tell me why it was here, you know, what we're thinking, and then what are we doing to change it? That's all. That would be, that would be very helpful.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. That's what I've been kind of talking about for a long time is when data comes to us, we need to have all the analysis already behind it so that we can, the other thing about, let's say about this particular data, this discipline data, this has been squarely with us for a number of years. And, you know, as a board, we can't, it's hard for us to discern priorities if we were looking at squarely numbers that aren't correct. I mean, we went through that with the financial stuff. So it's really important to get the numbers right and an explanation. You know, when the numbers look strange, tell us why they're strange.
Uh, slide ten then. Our desired outcome, students consistently attend classes and actively engage with learning by planning for the futures. Um, one indicator for attendance data percentage of students regularly attending. And the goal was to increase that from sixty-three percent last year to seventy-three percent this year and five percent in, in the subsequent years. And the other, um, goal that's within that desired outcome, high school and beyond, to have ninety percent of our eleventh grade students completing their high school and beyond plan during this school year. So by end of year, this will increase to ninety-five percent next school year, a hundred percent the following year. So those are our goals for those attendance and high, uh, high school and beyond. And so slide eleven shows where we are so far. Um, so far mid-year. Oh, did you want to?
Yeah, I was just going to comment, I was looking at the, so this, these numbers are for this year. I was comparing them to last year's regular attendance numbers. And it's interesting that there's, Thorndike is radically higher, which is good. Um, so then the question becomes, what did they do? Uh, Tuck Willa is fairly radically lower. So then what did they do? And then Choelter is radically higher. The others, Foster and Cascade View are about the same. So the question then becomes for Thorndike, Tuck Willa and Choelter, why the significant change? Because some of it was good, some of it was bad. So that's, that's again back to this, you know, show us data, but then tell us why, what's going on? Because that's, there's some pretty significant difference. I mean, Tuck Willa elementary was ninety-four percent last year and now they're at seventy-eight. What happened?
You'll bring up a very good point. The question why needs to be asked and then deepen from there. Each set of data we have. So on slide eleven.
Scott, can you just share a little bit about, because I know you've been meeting with the attendance, the district attendance person? Um, just some of your learning from that experience.
Um, yeah, our state in school coordinator, Kathy Turner, we do meet regularly. Um, some of her, um, as far as related into attendance, she just is noticing with so many, uh, what, what she has noticed, the impact is a lot on our students who are, have high mobility or maybe brand new to newcomers to the country. It's, um, so they're, they end up maybe for attendance, they may have to go somewhere else for a short time, maybe another housing, um, opportunity, come back later, maybe permanently find housing elsewhere. So there, she is just noting that there's a lot of, um, mobility that will, um, impact the, um, attendance. As opposed to some district who maybe there's hardly anybody moving. You're very, um, sure side of data to show who's, the rates of attendance. And slide eleven showing then once the way this data is broken down, because we want to make sure we always look at racial equity in our data. Um, this is, this particular table is broken down by, um, up, uh, percentage of all, um, Tuck Willa students regularly attending school. We see the average of the district is eighty-five percent, but that's averaging the schools as a grand total and disaggregated by race overall. So this is a way to get a bigger picture district-wide, but a way to see, is there a discrepancy, um, among different, um, identified racial groups? And then again, why? We are seeing, um, our two groups that are also our lowest number of students, American Indian, Alaska Native, and also Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander, specifically Native Hawaiian Pacific Islanders, much lower percent. And but if you look at the other groups, they are very similar within a couple percentage points. So that, that informs answers to a couple of questions, but leads to more questions. Um, it would lead us to say what, um, like the next steps on the second column on slide eleven. Um, engaging with the students against street level data, um, level. Identify students who are, engage with students who identify in these groups and to find out from them, what is, um, what would make it easier, more desirable to increase attendance? And that would help inform us, what are the barriers and what are we going to do to improve the access and opportunity to take away barriers? And then high school and beyond plan is the bottom of that second column, our mid-year progress. Um, forty-two percent of eleventh graders have completed the plan. The end of year goal is ninety. So mid-year, it's, um, not quite halfway, it's close. So, um, with the, the high school is still making a push to be able to get that done by end of year, to get, reach that goal of ninety. And then again involves the close communications with specific students, whomever doesn't have that plan done yet. Maybe it's partly underway. They'll be looking at what is, it needs to happen so they can complete that plan. In some cases, it's just for students maybe not even known what's, what's possible. So it's, um, making kids more aware of what are their options? And it shows the positions and people we have who, um, are involved in helping, um, connect in this way. Our, our state in school coordinator, our quality engagement specialists who are, um, directly with students who qualify for any mental services and our community and family liaisons.
Yeah, to, just in keeping a little bit with Director Simmons, Simpson's comments that I think doing this breakdown race at the district level is too high to be meaning, meaning much. I think breaking down by schools is much more meaningful because we know attendance at secondary is quite different from attendance at elementary schools. So, um, I think we're kind of struggling to find, and I think that's a little bit where Director Simpson was trying to, what's the right level? And it's going to be different depending on what data we're looking at. But in this case, I think, you know, this race is too high level, or I mean, district-wide is too high level. And I know there, then there's a trade-off between, you know, M less than ten and so forth. But I think in this case, building is a better level to do so.
And some cases where I anticipate per school, the number for, um, possibly for American Indian, Alaska Native, and I've yet to seen for sure for Native Hawaiian Pacific Islanders, those per school could very well be below the number two is, becomes too identifiable.
Right.
So that might be in elementaries, might be a group to have high numbers. And each second, each secondary could stand a lot.
Yeah, that's always my thing, to go up to as low a level as you can go without violating the purpose, yeah.
But you can, but the nice part is the schools. So what, one thing I just wanted to add, and because, um, one of the things we said to all of the school leaders and the school, uh, based leadership teams was to whatever that our strategic plan goals, that they need to pull that thread into their school improvement plans. So their school improvement plans, which I can make sure I get to all of you again, actually has their specific data. So here, so for example, um, if Foster High School has a goal for high school and beyond planning, they have that as a goal, right, for their plan? And then they would then create goals and strategies to support that based on their data, right? So they actually have a targeted goal on that. They also have a targeted goal on attendance. So they have listed strategies in their school improvement plan around that. So I think, what back to your point, is we should look at the school improvement plans and Scott has them for his elementaries, right? What did, what were those strategies, right? For example, if attendance, if attendance was great at Tuck Willa Elementary School, which is correlated to their success, but it's interestingly because their data is the opposite. So that's interesting information, right? Um, but their school improvement plans have the specific targeted goals with their current data listed. So for example, if, let's say, Tuck Willa Elementary started higher, maybe they have a higher attendance rate already. Um, and so their goal was to push it at a higher level. But I think looking at the strategies, that's the part that is the learning that we can bring back. And we did spend some time with the principals in small groups where they brought out and brought out their, their school improvement plans and worked together in carousels to do that sharing with each other. That was done at the, I think, the last two, uh,
Yes.
the last two principal meetings. So I was there because they were in small groups discussing that. So that is work they're doing at their level is to work, learn from each other in terms of that work that's happening and learn from each other the strategies. So what I'm hearing from you is you want to hear that here about what that learning looked like. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, I, I think that's what, I mean, we want to hear the strategies because then we can have some confidence that, yeah, the schools have absorbed that and are actually working on it ways that hopefully makes sense.
And then also what I'm interested in, and so if there's a school that's actually not reaching their goal, then why not, right? Their strategy, why not? So, and if the number is so low with Pacific Islanders and Native Americans, then that's easy conversations to have if it's five kids or 10 kids, so.
And I, and I love to hear, I love to hear, which I don't hear very often, is one school was doing it really well, the other school wasn't. And so the other school was taking the learnings from the, and implementing in their school. Love to hear that kind of stuff. Love to hear that kind of stuff.
Yeah. So that was work that they did in the last two um principal meetings. We do the principal meetings with everyone together, just so you know. They meet once a month, they meet at eight in the morning till about nine thirty, ten o'clock, depending on the month. And uh, we pull them all together. We don't separate them out between elementary. Okay, we do all of them together on a consistent basis. So in the fall, it was about, the focus really was about um, the focus of making sure I have my mic on, sorry. The focus was on getting the alignment work to the strategic plan, to the school improvement plan. That was number, that was fall focus and making sure they have their goals, their strategies laid out, that they met with their coordinator from the state, those that were in improvement. And then the next step was the focus on leadership development and then talk, accountable talk for the students, student talk. So that was the focus and bringing those multilingual strategies, and that was the whole piece of the work. And then the shift became around looking revising the progress monitoring, rebuilding out their school improvement plans and checking in with each other and learning from each other around the strategies. And they're in cross groups. Sometimes they sit together in their team. But I know there's a, when I walked in, for example, and we meeting, there was, the high school was with a couple elementary principals, we have a couple assistant principals over here, and then there's always district admin with them as well. So it's cross uh grade level. And the reason why we were really intentional about having all the principals together and the assistant principals together all the time is one, to build up the assistant principals' leadership work because they're part of the leadership team. Sometimes they're left out of principal development, so we wanted to ensure that they were coordinated and aligned. Two, we wanted to make sure that whatever strategies that we, because they all have newcomers, for example. So they should all be working in about how to do that, that accountable talk with the students in the classroom as a strategy. High school benefits from it, middle school, and then the alignment around the school improvement. Attendance might look different, but I'm sure that having Showalter and Foster High School looking at that together is mutually beneficial. It also builds consistency between when a student transitions from eighth grade to ninth grade. So I just wanted to share a little bit about what we do do with principals at their level so that what they could do, that their job is to take that information to their leadership teams and work with them to make sure that they're all on the same page. But it's been very intentional. We wanted to be coordinated, tight and aligned. And I will say this is year one for, at least for me in this role. But I am seeing, what I'm seeing evidence of people actually engaging, trusting and having those conversations. Um, what I'd like to see is us looking at uh what is actually, I think what I'd like to see is more flexibility in pivoting when we're learning something's not working. And that's that's a, that's a something we have to work on. If that's not, we're not as nimble there as a system.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, then I think we can move on to the early warning indicators, dual credits. Twenty twenty-three world language report. Is that on? I don't think your mic's on. There you go.
Yeah, it's on.
There it goes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Should I do it again, or everybody knows who I am? Um, any questions on the report? Um, I did receive some um on our Monday morning. Seven o'clock email, um, opening up the Google Docs. Uh, we did answer these questions.
I guess the I asked for some of this broken down by gender because one of the things I was um concerned about is exclusion, particularly exclusionary practices for boys. And it it looks like there was some some good progress made in the last year in terms of, you know, generally, and this has always been the case, males get disproportionately, you know, excluded, suspended.
Correct.
But um, it's going in the moving down in the right direction, uh, which is, I'm just curious, is have any, probably the wrong person to ask, but any ideas about why? Is there anything intentional that was done?
Um, I don't know exactly in each building, but some of the initiatives that they've been working on, which is is trying to do less exclusionary practices, you know, let less exclusionary things, such as having um one-on-one conferences, having group circles, like those types of things. Those interventions, I think, um, are working and excluding males as much as females. Be one for sure.
I was also curious, the, let's see, of the eighty-nine recorded suspensions in the first half twenty twenty-four, thirty-four percent were in in school and sixty-seven, sixty-six percent were out of school. Um, so pre-COVID, there was a pretty big effort we made to kind of avoid out of school suspensions.
Yes.
You know, and keep it uh, keep them in school. Um, we seem to have kind of lost that. Um, I guess that's another question is, you know, why are we kind of going back to seems like out of school suspensions? Um, is it, um, yeah, I'm having a little, that's probably more of an explanation for the secondary principles, but.
Yeah, prob- um, prior to, prior to COVID, there was a big emphasis from OSPI on doing different interventions before you, in fact, you had to try different things before you exclude this student from school. And so maybe a a review of those kind of protocols and and guidelines for uh, for the, for the school leaders might, might help.
Yeah, that's another one of, one of those things I like to hear from those schools about, you know, what's what's going on there because we don't, I mean, it's pretty much, I think it's pretty much established that, you know, out of school suspensions are not, we want to avoid those as much as possible unless there's some really good, really, really good reason for that.
We've had that conversation, Scott and I have had, especially when we become aware of an exclusionary action. We ask those questions. Um, what typically happens, what we were experiencing, especially when it's a disciplinary, especially of a minor, which I have some thoughts around as well. Um, what typically happens is um students are being put on emergency rights for pending an investigation, right? And so that seems to be what's happening in my experience right now, which is legal to do, but I guess, and we ask these questions and we've received a little um bumps around in those conversations, right? So um, for for the reason, and we're not in the building, so I'm not gonna, I don't know how
Yeah.
violent the situation is or how dangerous. Um, so we're trying, it's a balance between not questioning, right? The school leader or the assistant principals uh authority, which is a delicate matter. And I've already tangled with one of those conversations already. Um, and having to have a second conversation around that when I've questioned uh why we are doing that. Because I, and Scott and I have talked about this as well, especially because he oversees elementary in particular. What I'd like us to do is really, especially for elementary, but for secondary too, because they need to be in school to learn, is really talking through, and that's back to the anti-racist discipline goal, is when we're excluding kids. I mean, so for me, and I have a, I have an opinion about it, but I'm going to keep it straight on the evidence that we have. Um, there, when we send kids out, especially in elementary school, there's a message being sent to everybody. Right? So if it's a student of color specifically, all the kids in the classroom are getting a message. All the families, because everyone hears about it, are getting a message. And then the student themselves who are experiencing this are getting a message, right? And there's a lot of reasons why students are losing their control or, we have so many students in trauma. We think about students going home to a tent. So it is something we have to talk about, and I think we have to talk about it pretty openly with our principals about what is our philosophy on exclusion. Because I think if that's the conversation we need to have with all the school leaders and the assistant principals. Um, and I will say that in terms of compliance, we are like hitting all the buttons, checking off all the boxes. If we do an assessment, a threat assessment, you know, right? That's a technical fix, but really what we need to talk about is an adaptive problem. Like we, it's, 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 and there's bias in that as well. And so I want to make sure that we have that conversation around our philosophy as a district around exclusion. Because um, I don't think all of those emergency exclusions.
And I was, it was kind of curious, so thinking back before COVID, those numbers out of school actually went down quite a bit.
Yes.
And so there's obviously some intentional decisions that were made then. And I understand, you know, we're still understanding the impact of COVID on students in particular. And they've come back different. But that means our strategies probably need to change in terms of how we do anyway, so. Yep.
If I could just add a, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay, just a minute. Okay, just add a little bit to that. I, it makes me wonder like where there might be opportunity for us as a board to um strengthen a a policy around exclusion, um, if we even have one, which I assume we do in the student discipline policy, but um, that's something that I'm going to look into so that we can maybe bring something forward. Um, so that um, it kind of pushes the district to move in that direction, to have those conversations. And I think similarly to the ask around um, uh, the follow-up for discipline, I think this is a piece of it that I asked from you, Dr. Pachosa, is like, what, what is your timeline for actually having these discussions? Because I think it's great to say, we need to do it, we're gonna do it, we need to do it. But like, when are we actually gonna like move forward and start to, start the process of changing those hearts and minds, right? Um, I know I expressed this last time when we were talking about the discipline data is I have a really hard time with um, you know, labeling incidences as violent with really young people. Um, and so uh, you know, I just really, I really think we need to grapple with that. Um, and you know, this is not a question that I think we need to answer, or it's more of a hypothetical. But you know, what happens to a young person who's suspended, who is low income or houseless? Like what happens to them when school should be their safe, like is maybe their safe place to be, right? Um, with a roof over their head for the, those eight, nine hours when they're in school, right? So what happens to those young people? Um, so there's that. And then I actually want to go uh just really briefly back to the gender piece. Um, uh, Director Larson, I appreciate you asking the question, and uh, thank you um, uh, Mr. Baker for providing that. Um, and I I'm just curious, something significant is missing from that J data, that gender data.
Yes, I agree.
Um, I, I, the reality is, is I, I know that we are limited by, well, I know that we say we are limited by state reporting and the questions that they ask. But we cannot continue to erase trans and non-binary people. We cannot. When I see a report like this where the genders are binary, I know we've talked about, I've mentioned before, I don't ever want to see other in reference to gender. So I thank you for not ha- adding that, but we cannot erase our trans and gender non-conforming students. And when they, when we put up a rapport and we ask for gender information, I'd rather see, I'd rather say, we don't have accurate information about the gender of our students than to give me one that has the binary because that's a ratio. And that doesn't feel good for me as a gender core person, and I'm certain that it doesn't feel good for our students. Um, so knowing that we have limitations with what the state provides or what the state asks for, and then the reporting that comes back, what can we in Taquilla do to make steps in the, in the different direction? Or how can we use the information that we do have about students to actually create accurate data reports? So that we can actually have meaningful conversation about how our students are impacted. And then the last thing I'll say, and this again, that kind of goes back to the um conversation we were having before, is we really need to start thinking in terms of intersectionalities. We have to. And if you're not familiar with what uh, what I mean when I say intersectionality, uh, it was a term coined by Kimberly Crenshaw. Um, and essentially, um, it's a metaphor for helping us understand the ways that multiple forms of inequity or disadvantage sometimes compound themselves to create obstacles that often aren't understood. Um, or uh, among conventional ways of thinking. So when I talk about intersectionality, it's, it's great that we can see data broken down by race, but what I also want to see is I want to see what, how many black boys with IEPs are being disciplined disproportionately? I want to see the rate of black trans girls who are being suspended or targeted or feel a sense of disconnection, right? Trans and queer homeless youth, right? So I want to start, we need to start thinking in terms of intersectionalities when we're talking about this anti-racist approach to discipline, um, or really our anti-racist approach to anything. Um, we got to start talking about intersectionalities. And again, just to leave it on the gender thing, uh, we, we have to figure out how to stop. We have to figure out how to stop erasing our trans and gender queer students.
I, I just have one comment. Um, the, the end numbers for these, these populations right now are really, really small. And we have to, we have to protect the confidentiality of all of our students. And so for this particular one, um, the discipline piece, um, I believe that was the reason as to why it wasn't included.
There's not even a, a bar for it. So normally, if we have a sample um below ten, there's at least a, an indicator, a name, and then it, then it says below ten, right? So at least, at least I can rest somewhat assured that it's accounted for. But when I, but I don't even see that at all. And and I, I can make sense, but like I can understand that. And at the same time, I'm curious if that's even true, right? Um, or if we have, like, we have um skewed data because we don't have effective ways for trans people to um, uh, report that they're trans, right? Or gender queer, non-binary students to report that they're non-binary. So if we don't have those mechanisms in place, then of course that sample sizes look a lot smaller than maybe it is. Um, because identities around queer and trans is actually on the, on the rise um generally across the country. And I think that we have an important opportunity um with all of the anti-trans things that are happening, particularly in school districts around our country, to really, really step up and do better. And again, Mr. Baker, this is not about you. I know that we are so limited by certain reporting mechanisms. But I, I really want to urge us that we can do better, and and I think we need to get creative in figuring out how and what that looks like.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I, if I could just chime in, because I don't want the jewel of Dr. Carly's wisdom to get lost. Regardless of where somebody sits on how you view that, our true compass, North Star is all. That's where that falls into the all. Uh, and so that should affect how we respond. Not any other outside noise or, or personal or political bias. If we're addressing all students and those are students we serve, then we need to be able to let our data reflect that they're in our district and we're trying to give them the best education that they, that we can possibly give them. And so how and where that shows up is important for us to document. Uh, and I, and, and, and so I think I just want to let us stay focused. We're trying to serve all students in Taquilla's school district. Regardless of what any of us might think about black people, white people, straight, gay, queer, on, yeah. They all, that's why I said all caps. All, we're here for all of our students. And so thank you for sharing that. Uh, and I think we ought to um take heed to that as we move forward in our documentation, even in where however you, however we, we're in, we're rowing in the same boat, however we um acquire the data, let's put the all in mind. If it's a questionnaire, if it's a this, that and the other, let's put the all. Um, when, when I got suspended as a student, I want you to know I was a frequent flyer. Uh, nobody asked me if I was male or female. They didn't ask me if I was black or white. So I don't know, I'm sure the data showed up somewhere, but that was somebody else's observation. So we've got to figure out how to accurately track that with dignity um, of, of the student. Um, and I think that's not always um, taken in, in account for, because if the students are at a place where, where they're not willing to go public with that, then how do we document that? Or sometimes there's students who are queer but haven't come out to their parents. And there's some backlash when it shows up on a document that shows up at the parent's house. Uh, so I think we have to be mindful of how we serve. So I think we have to be mindful of how we serve that all. And that, that, that was just my two cents I wanted to add, um, into that. And I, and it's not a pig pile law, Mr. Baker. I just think in light of that wisdom, let us look for ways to more effectively, uh, serve the all of our district.
So I, uh, yeah, I have a couple of questions I think you can't answer because they're related to CTE. So, um, you had a list, I asked for a list of the CT courses that are dual credit, which means like they're getting some colleges giving them credits.
Correct.
Which colleges? So you have Digitoos, Financial Math, Microsoft Office, Specials, AP Computer Science, Food, Culinary. Is it the same school that's giving them college credit?
No, it's a variety. Like there's some of them overlap, like I think Digitoos is Renton Tech as well as Highline College.
Okay.
Financial Math I know is Renton.
Oh, Renton, okay.
Uh, Microsoft Office and is Renton and Highline.
Okay.
Renton is strictly the culinary and the child development. Biotech is Shoreline. Uh, animation tech is Green River, I believe.
Okay.
And computer science as well.
Is what?
Uh, as well, uh, Green River.
Green River.
AP Computer Science. These are, so these are, um, these articulation agreements are three years old. And so we're updating them now with many new classes. So there, there should be a lot more dual credit classes for next year.
So do, do you happen to know, so those are all community colleges? Are those credits also accepted at like University of Washington?
That would be school by school. I really don't know.
Yeah, that's always been the problem with some of the credits. Okay, so we don't, they're not necessarily four-year. I'm also curious, so the college and the high school, which is kind of a different program, pre-calculus, who's, who's giving us college and high school in that one? Is that Eastern? Oh, Central, okay. That's an interesting one to me because, I mean, when I went to school pre-calculus, is that, is that like trigonometry?
I believe so.
Huh, that didn't used to be a college course at all, or at least college credit course. That's interesting.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we, so we kind of, okay, so we, we're not, yeah, this is an ongoing thing. We don't really have a good selection of college and the high school. I mean, at all at this point.
Right, it requires some, um, definitely some effort on the teacher's part.
Right. And I just bring that up because I know our students ask about that. At least our student reps ask about that pretty constantly, so. Okay, thanks. Bye, Nate. Oh, I did, oh yeah, one, I just, just want to, so I asked for the, the World Language Credit and I just wanted to just comment on that because that is a program we started about twelve years ago. And I think looking at the, it's always interesting for me to look at the languages that our students. So this is a program where, um, the students can get different number of high school credits depending on if they show proficiency in, in different languages that they, you know, typically come to us with. And they can get up to four credits of, um, high school, which is a big deal because, I mean, to graduate, you know, you need twenty-four, so that's four of them. I mean, there, you still have to make all the basic requirements. But, you know, the, the reason I think this particular program is, is so important because it's one of the few things that in our school district, students that come from another country, um, particularly it's, it's frequently when they get here, they, they feel deficit, deficit, deficit. They're trying to figure out what's going on, you know, et cetera. And here they can, they bring a language that they've already know in a lot of cases. And we recognize that and give them credit for it. So we're kind of celebrating their success. And I know I've talked to students over the years who, you know, before we had this program, I mean, students have plenty of incentive to try and assimilate into American culture, not so much into their heritage language. And by rec, by the school district recognizing these, these credit and recognizing these capabilities that our students have, my students said, well, if I'd known I would get credit, I would have, you know, actually, you know, spent some effort to, in this case, it was Vietnamese, I think. And that connection, you know, typically families come over as groups. And the grandmother, grandfather probably are not going to learn English because it's, you know, it's hard to, at that, but if the students can, can connect with their, you know, heritage folks based on the language, their native language, that provides that strength of, you know, um, community and their sense of self-esteem and all that. So I just, this is really, and it's always kind of a, um, a bit of a geography lesson for me when I go through these lists of languages. Frequently, I don't know even, so I had to go up, look, Chukis, which is actually from Guam. We, we've had a number of students over the years that come from Guam. But, um, anyway, I just, I just want to, I like, I like to see this report every year, partly because I introduced the policy to make it happen, but also because I think our students, you know, are so, um, we had a little dip, I noticed, this year in terms of the number of credits, you know, of the participants. So I, I, I always get a little concerned. I mean, that one year doesn't necessarily make a trend, but I want to make sure that we're supporting this. This program does require some support on our, on our part to make sure that they have access to the, the assessments that, you know, where they can demonstrate their, their expertise in these different languages. So anyway, I just wanted to say that I think this is, um, really important and our students take advantage of it. I remember the first year we did it, um, you know, a ton of students immediately signed up and got credits for it. And it's, it's a really important part of what we do, so that's it, thanks.
I was the first school to pilot the World Language Credit, so it's a really
Yeah, we, it's also, I'm happy because we basically just stole everything from Highline in Seattle. They did all the work for us. There's a lot of work to set that up at OSBI and all that. And we just came and just grabbed their stuff and boom, we went. So thank you to Highline in Seattle for doing all the work.
But we can always think through, um, how we use the community liaisons. More, I, because I know they're really, so the, our community liaisons, they're so into the high schools. I mean, they, they even had a meeting with me. They called me in for a meeting. It was great to talk about things that they were seeing, the good, where were the challenges? I know that if we asked them to take this up as one of their, things that they can actually support and really like move for the system, I bet they would totally take this on as their project.
There's lots of interesting brain research that says if you're multilingual, your brain operates better. I mean, there's just a whole slew of reasons why this is a really good thing to do.
It's doing it quite a little.
Yeah.
Which means I agree.
Okay, is there any other discussion or comments? I think then we are there. We, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Get to do it once.
Man, hit the thing like you hit the
That was it, man.
Hit it like you mean it.
Come on, Charlie, hit it.
I'm